Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for being here for our regularly scheduled full council meeting. The March 25th, 2019 city council meeting of the full Seattle City Council will come to earth. It's 2:00 PM. I'm Bruce Harrell, president of the council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Gonzalez.
Here.
Herbl.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Juarez.
Here.
Musketa.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Sawat.
Here.
Bagshaw.
Here.
President Harrell.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you very much. If there's no objection, today's introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, it is adopted. There's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. The minutes of the March 18th, 2019 city council meetings have been reviewed, and if there's no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Presentations, I'm not aware of any presentations this afternoon, which will then lead us into public comment. And we're always delighted that you'll come down here and spend some time with us. So at this time, we'll take public comment on items that appear on our agenda for the day, or our introduction and referral calendar, or our 2019 work program. And I'll call you out in the order with which you've signed. And we ask that you limit your comments to two minutes, and I'll call two names out at a time. And we'll start off with Mr. Alex Zimmerman, followed by Toby Mills.
Thank you, sir. [speaking Spanish] My name is Alex Zimmerman. I want to speak about Agenda Number 5 and 6, about appointment people for City Light. So for last 10 years, I have experienced almost with every commissioner. It's approximately 300 people. They're all identical. You always choice a public garbage, a human garbage. These people come with one interest only, personal interest, small career, this exactly. So we need change right now. How we can do this? So I go to public, to City Light right now, for last few months, every meeting, and start talking about spending in Berta Room. Many meetings, like a $10 million cost, only one department, City Light Department, spent $10 million in Berta Room, talking to people. I don't have sense. So situation right now very simple, is this exactly what is I want to explain to you for many years? You choice a people for commissioner what is absolutely identical to you. You by definition, all criminal right now. I give you classic example. Council Harrell, Bagshaw, Gonzalez, violate constitutional law. Gonzalez, five times. Why you sit here? Can you explain to me? We pay you 100, how much? $40,000 per year? Can you sit this? You know you're not supposed to be sitting. You violate constitutional law. Open public meeting, act. And like Gonzalez, five times? Why you sit here? You, Council Harrell, why you doing this? You all attorney. You attorney, Bagshaw attorney, Gonzalez attorney, you know law. By definition, you're supposed to lose every year license. Why you sit here? So right now, I speak to everybody. Stand up, America. Clean this dirty chamber.
Thank you, sir. Our next two speakers was Toby and then Debelina from Puget Sound Sage. Is it Benneri?
It's actually Tony.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony.
No, my writing's probably not very well.
That's okay. Don't start her time yet. So Tony, after, who will follow you is Debelina? Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Tony Mills. I recently moved to Seattle, up on Seneca. I'm pretty much here just to introduce myself and let you know that I am hoping to become involved in working with the city council to help make changes that are in dire need in the city, our homelessness. And, you know, I watched a couple videos, and the March 11th video was very, very disturbing, the disrespect that citizens were shown that tried to speak. And I hope that the outcry from citizens and social media about the poor behavior by our city council members will bring awareness and a change. Because you are here to represent us, not yourselves, but the citizens. And if we're only allotted two minutes, your undivided attention would be, you know, the least expected. With that said, I look forward to working with my district and coming to more meetings and getting to know each and every one of you. Thank you for your time and for your duty.
Thank you. So following Debelina will be Julia Paschudo. I apologize if I'm slaughtering names. Julia.
Julia. Shall I say? Yeah. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Debelina Banerjee, and I'm a policy analyst and researcher with Puget Sound Sage. I'm here to speak today about the threats received by current city council members and staff. Over the past few years, our staff, leadership, and coalition members have attended and given comment at over 100 city and committee meetings. We've seen council extend public comment periods well beyond their required length of time to make sure that every comment is taken and every voice is heard. We've witnessed the council members stay focused and deeply listen to what all the speakers had to say, which is reflected in the policies that council has moved. Listening is most effective when leaders share lived experiences with those who speak, which speaks to the importance of having a diverse city council as we have now. More than ever before, council reflects who lives, works, prays, and plays in our city and communities. Especially with new leadership by women of color on council and council staff, our city has a stronger ability to listen and act than ever before. We have witnessed this council's commitment to engage deeply with community and to invest in comprehensive solutions to our most pressing issues. We stand with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia, I apologize for slaughtering your name once again. And Patrick Burke will follow you.
Good afternoon. My name is Julia Paschuto. I'm also a policy analyst with Puget Sound Sage. I'm also here today to speak about recent threats to council members received by council and their staff. Over the past few years, Seattle has emerged as a leader in inclusive democracy. We have a more representative government than ever that reflects the intersecting identities in our city. Those most impacted are leading in policy solutions that make sense for their communities, and we're moving big, bold policy. Our democracy is under threat. Just in the last month, we've seen escalation of threats to the life and well-being of our elected council and staff, undermining council and staff authority, particularly that of women of color, and the blatant promotion of hate against people of color, people experiencing homelessness, people with diverse gender identities, immigrants and refugees, and other marginalized groups. These attacks are not just random individuals. They represent a coordinated effort led by right-wing think tanks and media companies designed to undermine the inclusive democracy we fought hard to achieve. Seattle is better than this. While we have a lot of work to do to unlearn white supremacy in our culture, we are a city that embraces real democracy, a fair economy, and human rights. We're not going to allow these attacks to undo our city's values. We stand with you.
Thank you. Following Patrick Burke will be the Honorable Michael Fuller.
Yeah, I'm also here to talk about that video that was released last week. Despite who's speaking and what justification you want to choose to validate, why you think Councilmember Juarez's reaction was appropriate, the fact is, you have a better chance to start a YouTube career in these doors than you do in most tech incubators. To be honest, I've brought two transplants into this room to show the disconnect between you guys and the public comment section, just to show what, like, when people are moving here, what they're experiencing on the street, what they're seeing on the street, and then coming here, and only to see you guys being looked down, like, looking down. And it's really disheartening. It's clear that there's a problem with the current format. I think that every citizen that comes through those doors has a right to be looked at and heard by their elected representative equally, no matter who they are. If something is driving you to your phone instead of hearing us, then we're all wasting our time. We should see, I would like to see those that have claimed to be progressive and changed the status quo. Explore how to make public comment work for everybody, but more immediately take a stand and declare no more electronic use during public comment. And then be a leader. Make a charter rule. While you're at it, write an ordinance that doesn't allow elected officials to check out because they already have one foot out the door. Thank you.
Following the Honorable Michael Fuller will be Michael Winkler Chin.
Yes, this is Honorable Michael Fuller, SUI Jewish. Bruce Harrell, I got a problem with you. I think you abuse your authority and power over we the people. And this is extraordinary abuse of Chapter 4230, open meeting that. And against Margaret Lawrence Richardson, exercising our First Amendment right due process, equal protection by 14th Amendment rights, and procedure due process, substantive due process. And you're openly violating RCW 2.48.210, your oath on admission, RCW 2.24.020, your oath, and RCW 2.04.080, your oath to office, 98.36.080, malicious harassment, and 42.52020, activities incompatible with public duty. And 49.60.30, freedom from discrimination. And United States versus Lee, 1882, meaning no man in this country is so high to where they're above the law. And United States versus, the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882, which violates United States versus Lee, 1882. Extraordinary abuse, abusing more turpitude of extraordinary circumstances, reckless misconduct, wanton misconduct, and irrecoverable injury and harm to Margaret Lawrence Richardson and Black Lives Matter community. This is not the changes or the dreams Black Lives Matter can believe in, our new generation, our unfortunate females, the male that are sleeping on the street. September 11, 2001, 2,996 deaths, 2,977 victims, 343 firefighters' deaths, 19 hijackers' deaths. 2010, 41.2 million unauthorized, undocumented aliens. February 2015, 42.1 million unauthorized, undocumented aliens. And now the taxpayers are paying $338.3 billion for unauthorized, undocumented aliens and our veterans sleeping on the street.
Thank you very much, Honorable. Thank you very much.
But hey, I ain't through with you.
I know, I understand that. Thank you.
Oh, you note that for the record, ain't it that the record reflect?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Honorable. I appreciate that. And then our last two speakers will be Michael and then Kirsten Harris-Talley.
Good afternoon, city council members. I'm speaking as Michael Winkler Chin of the SEID PDA first. I first wanted to thank you all for your support last week of a project that we're working on. I actually view that as kind of an ongoing support of the efforts in the Chinatown International District over the past few years to try to maintain the place that a lot of us call our heart home. We may not live there, but that's really where we emotionally live. And so I want to thank you. I know that we have a city council member that's stepping out pretty soon, and want to thank them for weird things like companion legislation, but also weird other things like helping us eventually get a bathroom built in Hingham Park, helping really push forward on issues of community preference, which people don't know yet, but they will soon, and will figure out how to make the community last for us. As a private citizen, as Michael Chin, resident of District 2, which sounds so much like The Hunger Games, living on Beacon Hill, I wanted to thank you, as somebody who just lives in the community, whose daughter goes to high school here, I just want to thank you all for the support that you guys don't get too often. You guys actually have pretty nasty jobs sometimes, and I understand, you know, it's great to see you guys out and about in the community. You guys are super accessible because for some reason, you guys do drink coffee, you guys do do your town hall meetings, you guys are out and about. I know where certain people go and have breakfast coffee, that's you, Councilmember Harrell, in the district. And I run into you at times that are kind of like embarrassing for me, like when I'm buying products at Bartel Drugs, and you guys all figure out what health conditions I have. But I feel that you guys are more accessible to us than ever because you guys look more like me than ever. So thank you. So that was the Chin resident part. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is former council member Kirsten Harris-Talley. Thank you for joining us.
Hello. I am also here to speak to the amazing job and role you have as city council members. I know that times have been extraordinarily hard of late, and I just wanted to speak to the fact that there is this larger meta-narrative right now that's wholly against this body, that is unfounded. I had the pleasure of working beside so many of you on this dais, and I know for a fact that when folks are looking at their phones and their computers, oftentimes, they're keeping notes of what's happening in public comment. They're referring to sections of the agenda that folks are referring to. They're looking up really good documentation and making sure they're taking note, because we do take those comments seriously. We did go back and talk about what people had to say. You did have emotional reactions when people shared to you the very realities of what they're living through. And that, in a time of technology, I think the last thing we need to ask of our body is to move away from the tools that help you document what you're hearing from us. And that it is not surprising to me to see what happened with this viral video. I know the kind of actors in our city who are spreading that video and spreading the lies about that video. While we have not always agreed, what I have seen is folks actually deliberate and discuss ideas that they may not agree with, which may not even be from their own body or constituency by district, but are important for the deliberation. And I also wanted to say directly to you, President Harrell, I have seen in real time, when I served beside you, how you took a stand around what the balance of public speech is, both for the council members and for the general public. And I have wholly appreciated the fact that you all have been able to have a balance of making sure there is free speech, both for us as citizens to share the very real things about what happens when you make policy decisions, but also being aware that you are citizens who have free speech as well. And it is your job to be able to talk about a varying spectrum of ideas coming from your constituents without being attacked. And I would also like to note, the actors who are doing these attacks, it is not lost on me that these sorts of attacks never happened before the diversity both of gender, color, and ideas were on this council. To me, the backlash you are feeling speaks to the fact that you are representing us and are a body that is closer to representing our city, and I thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you for your public comments. We appreciate that, and we'll move through our agenda. So we'll go to the payment of the bill section. So please read the title.
Council Bill 119486, appropriate amount to pay starting claims and ordering the payment thereof.
I'll move to pass Council Bill 119486. It's been moved in second. If the bill passed, any further comments? Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Musketa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Please read our first agenda item.
Agenda items 1 through 4, appointments 1268 through 1271, appointments of Sylvia Gonzalez and Elizabeth Hunter Keller as members of Domestic Workers Standards Board for term to February 28, 2021, appointments of Teresa B. Hillis and Lani K. Todd as members of Domestic Workers Standards Board for term to February 28, 2022.
Councilmember Musketa.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I move to confirm appointments 1268 through 1271, to take the Domestic Workers Standards Board first, please.
Yes, please. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appointment, thank you.
Oh, did they have to be approved? I'm sorry.
It's not just a Seattle Channel delay. That was an actual delay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for the confusion. We do need a second on this, given that we are making the formal move today versus the recommendation.
So they have been, all four have been moved in second, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could offer a little bit of background on Appointment 01268, this is the appointment of Sylvia Gonzalez, who is a member of the Domestic Worker, to be a member of the Domestic Workers Standards Board. Sylvia is a mother, a grandmother, a domestic worker, an immigrant, and a community organizer at Casa Latina. She has been a domestic worker for more than 15 years. She's participated in many, many, many meetings to help create not just the Domestic Workers' Bill of Rights, which she helped to help draft last year, but she was also a lead organizer and fighter in the $15 minimum wage campaign here in Seattle, and the Carrying Across Generations campaign for home care workers. Her work at Casa Latina and in partnership with the city of Seattle has been invaluable, and she is here with us today. Appointment number 2, which is 01270, appointment of Elizabeth Hunter Keller as a member of the Domestic Workers Standards Board. She is a domestic worker employer of a housekeeper and nanny, so as a hiring entity, she is very passionate about making sure that domestic workers are treated with dignity and respect. She is also a resident of District 6. Appointment number 3 is number 01269 in your materials, Teresa Hillis, to be a member of the Domestic Workers Standard Board. Teresa has been working with us through the creation of the Domestic Worker Policy as well. She helped us dig into the policy details and offered a policy lens from the employer perspective. She is also a member of the nationally recognized Moms Rising entity, and we are very grateful for the number of hours she has helped dedicate to not only crafting this policy, but her commitment to the Domestic Workers Standards Board. She is a resident of District 2. And finally, number 4 on our agenda for today is Appointment 01271, appointment of Lani K. Todd as a member of the Domestic Workers Standard Board. She and I have had the incredible opportunity to work together for a number of years on healthcare, on labor standards issues. She's currently serving as the Legislative and Public Policy Director at SEIU 775. I had the opportunity to work with her in a previous position when she was at SEIU 925, standing up for childcare workers' rights and improving access to affordable childcare across the city, I mean, across the state. So she brings years of experience on policy change, advocacy, and really creative solutions. And as a mother herself, I'm really excited to see the experiences that she's going to be bringing forward to the board as a District 2 representative.
Thank you very much. All four candidates have been moved in second. Are there any further comments from the dais? If not, all those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and all the appointments are confirmed. I do believe we have Ms. Gonzalez here with us, and if you'd like, you can share a few words with us, and if there's no objection, we can suspend the rules. I'm not trying to put pressure on anybody, but we'd be honored if you want to share a few thoughts with us.
Y bienvenidos. Gracias por estar aquí con nosotros. Soy muy emocionada. Sé que es un compromiso muy grande.
I'm very excited. I know it's a big commitment.
Y solo para decir ese trabajo, el estar aquí o ser nombrada para la standard board, no es un trabajo de yo sola. Es un trabajo que tenemos muchas trabajadoras del hogar en esta lucha, que se empieza a ver una luz al final del túnel.
That this work to be nominated for the standard board is not only work for me, but also representing all of the other domestic workers, to be a light.
Al final del túnel.
At the end of, to have a light at the end of the tunnel.
Y gracias, mis compañeras no pudieron estar el día de hoy aquí porque tienen que estar trabajando.
A lot of my friends could not be here today because they are working.
Y solamente gracias y seguimos con el lema de dolores huertas. Si se puede.
So thank you, and we continue with the soul of dolores huertas. Yes, we can.
Si se puede.
Thank you very much. Gracias. Okay, let's read the next two agenda items 5 and 6 together.
Agenda items 5 and 6, appointments 1272 and 1273, appointment of Michael Hansen as member of City Light Review Panel for term to April 12, 2021, and appointment of Chris Mefford as member of Seattle City Light Review Panel for term to April 11, 2020.
Councilmember Musketa.
Thank you, Mr. President. On these two, I will also move to confirm appointments 1272 and 1273.
Second.
Both have been moved and seconded.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. President. On appointment number 5, which is appointment 01272, Michael Hansen, we'd like to have him as a member of the Seattle City Light Review Panel. Mike is the chief operating officer for Sabi Corporation, a longtime Puget Sound family owned and operated business with a long history of community engagement. Mike manages more than 4 million square feet of commercial and data center properties. And over the past 15 years, Mike has been actively involved in City Light management and has participated in numerous strategic planning and rate design sessions. He's going to be a great addition to the review panel. Item number 6 on our agenda is Appointment 01272, appointment of Chris Mefford as a member of Seattle City Light Review Panel. Chris is an independent partner in economic development to cities, counties, governments, and businesses. Over the course of his nearly 25-year career in Seattle, he has worked with elected officials and leaders in the region's most important businesses, and he strives to provide an objective, transparent, and balanced viewpoint that serves the region's economic, social, and environmental needs and interests. We are also very excited that he wants to bring his energy, resources, expertise to Seattle City Light's review panel.
Very good. Any further comments or questions? I'd like to just make a comment before we vote, and that is, and I say this to the two appointees, Mickael Hansen and Chris Mefford, that if the thrust behind these important positions should be that they get the information needed to make decisions, and I say to them that if they do not get the information, all of the costing information, the pricing information, the allocations, et cetera, to look at both the rates and the rate structure, then they should come to us as a council. Because historically, one of the challenges, both with ESPU and City Light, the rate payer, the rate-funded organizations, if you will, of the city, is that they have this information that they use to figure out the rates and to compute the rates, sometimes as sensitive and sometimes guarded, and perhaps intentionally or unintentionally. But what we've tried to do is try to create this panel that has access to the same information that the decision-makers at the departments have, such that they could protect all of the rate payers, whether they're large companies or people on fixed income who really struggle to pay their bills. And so I wanted the public to know that this City Light Review Panel, again, is just not a commission to superficially look at information, but they should get all of the rich information that we are entitled to as policy leaders. And so I want to thank these two people for serving. Okay, any other comments other than that? Okay, all those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, the appointments are confirmed. Please read the report of the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee.
The report of the Housing, Health, Energy, and Workers' Rights Committee, agenda item 7, Resolution 31872, approving the proposed budget framework of the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission for its fiscal year 2019 through 2023. The committee recommends a resolution be adopted.
Councilmember Musketa.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I described this morning in council briefing, we have an opportunity to advance a resolution today that is really about an international treaty. I handed out a central staff memo from Eric McConaughey. Thank you again for providing that comprehensive analysis for our full committee partner, or council partners. Just very briefly, this is regarding the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission, or the SEEC, which was established as part of the Ross Lake Seven Mile Reservoir Treaty signed in 1984 between British Columbia and the city of Seattle. The SEEC is made up of eight commissioners appointed by the mayor of Seattle and eight appointed by the premier of British Columbia. The SEEC's mission is the preservation and protection of natural and cultural resources and recreational opportunities of the Upper Skagit watershed through advocacy, international cooperation, and strategic partnerships. Again, I want to thank my committee colleagues, Councilmember Juarez and Councilmember Bagshaw for raising the questions specifically about tribal relations and, more importantly, tribal representation on this important board, which we're going to get more information about, I believe. The SEEC administers the Skagit Environmental Endowment Fund, compromise of international, sorry, of compromise of initial contributions from Seattle and B.C. of $4 million and $1 million respectively, and annual supplemental payments from both parties based on power sales. The SEEC prepares a budget on a five-year cycle, which requires approval by the B.C. government and the city of Seattle. Finally, the SEEC funds projects ranging from recreational enhancement to educational and ecosystem science. That's what we're funding today, and we will be getting more information to compare the projected five-year budget going forward with what was expended in the last five years, which will be critical to help answer the questions that the council currently has. Thanks so much for the approval of the budget in 2015 to 2018 via Resolution 31568 in 2015. This resolution approves the 2019-2013 budget, and we recommend it for the full council passage.
Thank you, Councilmember Musketa. Any questions or comments? If not, let's vote. Those in favor of adopting the resolution, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, the resolution is adopted, and the chair will sign it. Please read the report of the Civic Development, Public Assets, and Native Communities Committee.
Report of the Civic Development, Public Assets, and Native Communities Committee, Agenda Item 8, Council Bill 119475 relating to the Seattle Department of Parks and Recreation and Seattle Public Utilities, transferring partial jurisdiction of a portion of the West Ewing Mini Park from the Seattle Department of Parks and Recreation to the Seattle Public Utilities. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. Council President, I believe on the Agenda Day Items 8 to 12 are all mine, and they're all very riveting, so everybody pay attention. That was a joke, everybody. That's a joke, everybody. Item number 8, this legislation would transfer partial jurisdiction for the subsurface area of parking, recreating, and landscape portion of the West Ewing Mini Park from Seattle Department of Parks and Recreation to Seattle Public Utilities. This allows the construction of a combined sewer underground microtunnel from Ballard, Fremont, Wallingford, and North Queen Anne neighborhoods. The storage tunnel would be 2.7 miles long between Ballard and Wallingford to temporarily hold peak combined sewage flows that exceed system capacity. In addition, the transfer means the requirements of Seattle meets the requirements of Seattle municipal code and federal water quality regulations. This is necessary because there is no reasonable and practical alternative location for the underground microtunnel and associated internal facilities. And if the city does not utilize the West Ewing Mini Park parcel for the alignment of this microtunnel, it would require significant engineering and redesign and increased capital costs for a new alignment. The committee passed unanimously, and we recommend that the City Council pass this bill today.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? If not, please call the role on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Muscata.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passed, and the chair will sign it. Please read the next agenda item.
Agenda item 9, Council Bill 119477, authorizing the superintendent of Parks and Recreation to execute and accept from the Washington State Department of Natural Resources on behalf of the City of Seattle a waterway permit for Waterway 1 in Laurelhurst. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. Items 9 and 10 will be involving the same type of waterway permit. I'll begin with item number 9. This legislation authorizes state the State Department of Natural Resources, DNR, permit for Waterway 1. Waterway 1 is a piece of waterfront property used as public open space and is maintained by the Laurelhurst Community Club through a memorandum of agreement with Seattle Parks and Rec. This permit will have a five-year term. The Committee on Civic Development, Public Assets, and Native Communities made a unanimous recommendation that the city, that City Council pass this bill.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the role on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Muscata.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passed, and the chair will sign it. Please read agenda item number 10.
Agenda item 10, Council Bill 11942, authorizing the superintendent of Parks and Recreation to execute and accept from the Washington State Department of Natural Resources on behalf of the City of Seattle a waterway permit for Waterway 3A in the Washington Park Arboretum. Committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Juarez.
Again, as stated, this is another waterway permit in the arboretum, and as stated, the legislation authorizes Parks to execute a waterway permit with the State Department of Natural Resources. The term of this permit, again, as the former permit, is five years, and the committee recommends its passage today.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the role on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Sorry, somebody interrupted her.
Johnson.
Aye.
Muscata.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passed, and the chair will sign it. Please read agenda item number 11.
Agenda item 11, Clerk File 314403, council land use action to modify development standards for a city facility to allow the installation of seven athletic field light poles at the Soundview Playfield. The committee recommends that the council land use action be granted as conditioned.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you, Council President. This Soundview Light, or the Soundview Park project has been, we've been working on it for a while, and I'm actually pretty excited that this is going to finally happen. The proposed facility is a city facility as defined by CLMISPL code 2384A. The CL, Seattle City Council has the authority to waive or modify a development standard for a city facility under the code. Parks has demonstrated that a proposed light pole height is necessary to light the playfield sufficiently and that the height of the poles will reduce light spillage and glare. Parks has demonstrated that the light spillage and glare to the adjacent residential properties will be further mitigated by shielded light fixtures and existing mature trees. I should add that there are 10 other improvements that are going to go on in this park, including the removal and laying down of new turf. A construction management plan approved by the Seattle Department of Transportation would address construction impacts related to construction traffic, parking noise, and the Committee on Civic Development, Public Assets, and Native Communities passed unanimously, and we ask that the City Council today adopt Clerk File 314403 as granted.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Johnson.
Just want to say thanks to Councilmember Juarez for getting this one across the finish line. We first put this in the budget in 2016, folks. It'll get built in 2019. Simple little things like this sometimes take a lot longer than we want them to, but an exciting investment for our folks who are anxious to get access to our playfields all throughout the city.
And I just want to add too, thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, that besides the turf and the new lights, there's so many other amenities, including making it ADA accessible, which those are all things that we pushed hard for, so we're happy about.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments before we, we will file this file? This is a clerk file. So, those in favor of granting the council land use action as conditioned, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, the council land use action is granted as conditioned, and the chair will sign the findings, conclusions, and decisions of the council. Please read agenda item number 12.
Item number 12, appointment 1239, appointment of Colleen Echahak Hayashi as member of Seattle Indian Services Commission for term to December 31, 2020. The committee recommends the appointment be confirmed.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. This gives me great pleasure for three reasons, but one of the first is, Colleen Echahak is a wonderful person and friend to Indian country. However, I used to serve on the Seattle Indian Service Commission, and I was legal counsel to them for many, many years, so I'm familiar with them as a PDA, a public development authority, in which they can assume debt and issue debt and do great things, and they have. So, getting back to Colleen, Colleen is a leader amongst native communities and a tireless public servant for the City of Seattle. She serves as the executive director of Chief Seattle Club, a human service agency that provides for the basic needs of its members, many of whom are experiencing homelessness. The Seattle Indian Service Commission is a public development authority whose main purpose is to carry out programs to improve the overall living conditions of American Indians and Alaska natives in King County, such as housing, income, job, help, placement, eviction, prevention, and other social services. I can think of no one more qualified and well-suited to serve the commission. On a few other additional notes, Colleen Echahak has worked tirelessly with my committee, our committee, on the waterfront issues. She's a member of the Community Police Commission. She's also on the KUOW board. I've worked with Colleen and her family on many community issues, and in particular, as of recently, state and federal agencies and organizations, along with her sister Abigail Echahak, at the Seattle Indian Health Board on missing murdered indigenous women and girls. Colleen, like most of her family members, have dedicated their personal and professional life for the betterment of all native people, all of our relations wherever they live. Colleen Echahak is an up-and-coming leader, and all, besides all of that, she's a very kind and good person. And on a personal note, a special thank you to her husband, Matt Hayashi, for the sacrifices Matt and his children have made to allow Colleen to serve on so many committees and do so many things. And we know that we can't do it alone. We need a support system, and so a shout-out to Matt. I think he'll appreciate that. Because I know when you're a mother and your kids are young and you're trying to do all these things at once, you definitely need a partner that is there by your side. So, with that, I'm hoping that this City Council, again, will appoint and confirm Colleen Echahak to the Seattle Indian Service Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Any further questions or comments? I was going to say a few favorable things about Ms. Echahak Hayashi, but you didn't leave me any to say. I just agree with everything you said, so I look forward to supporting her. Those in favor of confirming the appointment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, the appointment is confirmed.